Well, it's seven P M. It's our first meeting of the year. We can start off with, uh, thanking everybody for being here. Uh, we'll stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yeah. Um, Louise Estep?
Here.
Rachel Smith?
Here.
Jody Downsack?
Here.
Martha Frank?
Here.
Rick Tolz?
Here.
Lynn Selbain?
Lynn is on, but she didn't give an excuse why. I don't know what she was doing, but she did make it. Thank you. We have a new year of organization. We have to draw our seats. Change where we reside at in here?
And pass through.
Is this considered like what? Do we know what? I mean, I don't know what the numbers are once again. One, two, three, four, five, six. Three of them.
You only get one seat.
That's true.
I don't know what that thing was doing there. It was kind of squishy in one of us.
I'm staying put.
Oh, you were. Everybody's moving?
Yep.
Oh, you're just getting started.
You're staying put, too.
So, we must have been a little.
Five is... Six is the one.
I'm five.
Okay, so you're sitting two?
Excuse me, Joey.
You need to take your name back.
I forgot to.
I'll get it.
Oh, look at you.
Well, where are you going?
Here?
Yep. Thank you, Louise.
Also, you were.
What are you hearing, Lynn? Is that her?
That's right.
Okay.
Everyone's a troublemaker. What?
Nothing.
Oh. Okay, the next thing we have to do is nominate president of council for the twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to nominate Rachel.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second for nominating Rachel for council president for twenty twenty-four. Is there any other nominees? If not, we'll proceed with the vote.
Um, Louise Estep, yes. Rick Tolz?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Jody Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Yeah, and now we have to swear you two in. So, if you want to, I have them standing by the table. What will you use, oath of office, and when I say aye, state your name? And then I'll go through and repeat the things.
Okay.
As oath of office for Grand Rapids Village Council, aye.
Rick Tolz.
Rachel Smith.
Do solemnly swear to faithfully and honestly.
Do solemnly, solemnly swear to faithfully and honestly.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
To uphold the constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Ohio and the ordinances of the village of Grand Rapids, Ohio.
Constitution of the state of Ohio and the ordinances of the village of Grand Rapids, Ohio.
And to discharge the duties of a village councilperson.
And to discharge the duties of a village councilperson.
For the village of Grand Rapids, Ohio, to the best of my ability.
For the village of Grand Rapids.
Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So, how we got.
We got.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have the approval of our minutes for a regular meeting held December eleventh and a special meeting December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our regularly held meeting on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, as well as our special meeting held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, they'll be approved as read. We have approval of our bills from December eighth, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, the bills paid, and also January first and January fourth, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and two cents.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve our bills dated December eighth through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, as well as the bills dated January first through January fourth, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, for a total of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and two cents.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Chad, on the American legal one, is that, um, the second installment or the last installment?
Second.
Second. You have one more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, is there any other questions? Now, proceed with the vote.
Uh, Rick Tolz?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Jody Downsack?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Motion passes for approval of our bills. Bob, do you want to talk about the electric streetlights?
Yeah, I've, uh, I was wondering if this ordinance to request the added to assist lots for the streetlights, if this has already been sent through?
All right, we've already had.
Okay. Did anybody get any quotes from Toledo Edison for grants? And the reason I'm asking is I had a guy come to the house. He did do some work on my, on my telephone pole. And he was telling me that the, the villages were getting grants from Toledo Edison. So, maybe something you folks need to look into.
It could be. I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Did he happen to mention any numbers over there or anything?
No, he did not. He told me that there was a lot of villages signing up for it, though.
We have no sheriff to receive them. Along to the line. I've got the assignments for, um, the village twenty twenty-four committee assignments. I have them in front of you. Haven't changed tremendously, but there are little tweaks on it. Glad we've gotten to a new year and, um, last year was pretty interesting. We did get some projects done and started and sidewalks are another side to another project that will be going this year again as well. We have to work on those and, um, we had a town hall meeting scheduled last, uh, about last week, I guess it was. And, um, we can proceed with that now that things are ironed out. We'll set another date for that and get that rolling. There's things, things that we have for the utilities in the town that have to be booked on. A few odds and ends that consistently breaking down, but try to get some of those done. I really have nothing else right at this point, other than I hope we have a great year and we work together well and, um, things get. I'd like to thank the people that did, with the committees, or the committees that put on the, um, the Christmas stuff throughout this last month. It was great. And without the volunteerism for it, it wouldn't happen. And they did a tremendous job and, uh, it looked really good with all the people that were in town and it was a big hit. And, um, thanks, Angie. You did a lot to it or a lot for it and it was well appreciated. Along with many other people, and I'm just singling you out. Um, we'll move on to, um, Chad's report.
I don't have a lot either. Um, the carpet installation out of the office is supposed to start the twenty-second. Probably put something out so people know that it's gonna be kind of busy in there. Um, I did receive a quote to fix the header being moved. I'm waiting on two more people to come out and give me two more quotes. Um, we ordered two baby changing stations for the restrooms. And, uh, we're gonna put those up. We want to paint the restrooms first. If you guys have any choice on color, just let me know. I was thinking maybe a light gray, brighten up a little bit. Um, so we're gonna do that. We'll probably have to put something out, too, to let people know the bathroom's gonna be closed for a couple of days while we paint them there. And then the sheriff's office notified us that they have a rate increase for twenty twenty-four. It's going up from forty-six, forty-four an hour to fifty, twenty-three an hour. And, uh, that's pretty much all I have.
From forty?
Forty-six, forty-four to fifty, twenty-three now. And, uh, guardian warrant did come out. They have, we set up, we have two cameras out there now, one by the door coming in. We can kind of see the recycling bins. And there's also one in the office pointing out. And then we have a, a thing where it's kind of buzz, buzz in to get into the office. That's something I changed. Uh, so I got.
Is there a, a note on the door to buzz?
We'll put one on.
Okay.
So, there's two cameras, one on the outside, one on the inside?
Yep. And then the little one for the buzz in has a camera on as well. They can see who's standing there.
Oh, right, okay.
Reading of warrants and reservations. None of those. We have unfinished business.
I have a couple of things. Um, I'm not on the Parks Committee, but I did see in the blade where we were awarded, um, for the park grant from the Lou County Parks District, the one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for the bike racks. I don't know if we've gotten anything official to the office yet. I know we'll get the check later, but I didn't know if they would send a letter or. I don't know.
I don't think we got a letter. I saw that, like, on the symbol that we got.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing is I wanted to talk about, um, the American Rescue Funds that we have, the. And then thinking about this quite a bit, reading what qualifies, what doesn't qualify. And, um, I know all the committees haven't had a chance yet to meet yet. I haven't received any projects, so to speak, from any of them. And we have a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents that needs to be allocated by the end of this year and spent by the end of the following year. Um, I would like to highly recommend that council consider, um, making available all, most if not all of it to, like, our nonprofits in the area and having them apply for it by the way of, like, a grant. So, you know, I was trying to come up with a list. I may have forgotten, you know, someone. But, um, you know, I was thinking about the Boy Scouts, the Grand Rapids Area Swimming Pool, the Arts Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Historical Society, the Library, the Used Baseball Softball League, and the Food Pantry. I think a lot of those organizations, um, could use a boost and then that would come back to us, the village tenfold. That was, is gonna be my recommendation. Um, the village is very fiscally sound. This is like if you received per se, uh, holiday bonus, a merit check. We weren't expecting to get this. Unless there's some projects out there that would qualify for this, you know, we could set some of it aside, but, um, I would, I would like to see the village give back to those organizations that give back to us and to the residents.
You know, suffered through it, too.
Right, yeah. So, something to think about. Not asking anyone to act on it tonight, but I'd like for you to think about it. Um, I have started to work if the council decides to go forward with that, like, an application form and things like that as to, you know, what they would need to submit to be eligible and to qualify for that. And I pretty much dummy it off of other cities. You know, I didn't recreate, I didn't create it. I just was, you know, borrowing. But I just, you know, I just think a lot of these organizations, again, are run by volunteers. And, um, I think they could probably use the money.
And it's a good way to give back to the community. And that takes.
They serve our residents and.
It takes a lot of, um, argument out of it, I think.
Well, in most, um, most cities that are doing this in the way of a grant, they set a maximum, whether it be ten thousand, five thousand, whatever, and we can discuss that. Um, you know, like, if there's a project that we need the money for, you know, we can take that and then say, okay, a maximum of whatever.
I think that's true. And, um, I have a question about the, um, if we're gonna be having to deal with that, um, the tree. Um, what's his name? Mr. Baron? Glenn Baron. Okay, so I'm just wondering, once we decide on where it's going to go, if there's going to be, what kind of expense will be connected to the bringing it and setting it up, getting the plumbing line out there?
The bronchus. And she was after.
Yes, the tree, yeah.
Well, you said the tree in life.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a.
Okay, this, okay.
A, a tree with a fountain, so it's gonna take some plumbing as well. And I don't even know if that would even qualify as some of the funds, but at any rate.
A lot of it has to do, when you read it, it has to do with what did you lose during COVID?
Right.
What, um, what was lost during COVID? So, that was not even part of the village during COVID, so I don't know if that would be eligible or not.
You're right.
You know, we would have to ask our solicitor that. I wouldn't want to try to make that decision.
Oh, no.
I agree.
I think.
I mean, it would be, if you're looking at per se utilities, it would be something in the village that maybe broke. You know, one of the lines that broke. We might be able to justify something like that. But something new like that, I don't, I don't think.
No, I don't feel so either. I just brought it up because I was.
Yeah, but that's fine. And, you know, like I said, as I'm reading down through.
Yeah, I read the whole document and it did seem to fold back on itself a lot, so the summary is good enough. But at any rate, I agree. That's a great, that's a great place to think about and start. Because we've got plenty of those in this.
We do. And I probably have forgotten some. But, you know, well, all we can do is if council decides to go forward with that, is to make it public. I have been, um, obtaining addresses because I would like for the ones that are known at least to send a letter to them to let them know, along with, um, the grant criteria, what would need to be submitted.
I think that sounds great. Now, is that something that we will decide as a council?
Absolutely.
Or do we have?
Absolutely.
Doesn't have to go to a committee?
No, it would probably come from committee to council, but I kind of think it's, I think it's a bigger issue, so I think council should decide that. And not just a committee.
I agree.
I agree. That's why I brought it up here instead of, like, the finance committee. You know, I don't think that just the finance committee should decide.
Okay, thank you, Louise.
So, we can talk about that again at the next meeting and just think about it and.
If anything, the finance committee could kind of work on the grant.
Yes.
Application and then we would present the.
Right.
Tears. The request.
Right, correct, to council.
To council.
Yes, that's what I thought. They could funnel them through, work through the paperwork and then present.
Yeah.
All of them to council for consideration.
I guess in the meantime, we could think about the organizations that, so we won't skip over to somebody.
Right, yes. If you could, you know, if there's an organization that I'm forgetting. I'll, I'm going to read down through these again for you or do you?
Send it to us.
Okay, I can send it to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
Mayor, I also had a bit of unfinished business. Um, we, back at the end of last year in two thousand twenty-three, uh, we talked about appointing a representative to the ambulance district, so you need to follow up on that as well.
Yeah, they have not, or I have not found anybody that could be on that disfamiliar with the fire department, want some volunteer time to order. Uh, get seventy-five dollars a meeting, have twelve meetings a year. And, um, it's, it's quite a, no, it's, it takes some time sometimes, but, uh, I feel as though that I should probably should stick with it, I guess, um, as much as I can.
Are you willing to serve in that capacity then?
Yeah, I would, I would do that again, yes.
And it's better that it's someone from the fire department or from the EMS or both or?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
That way they're familiar with what is going on with the squad and, um, work out there and take care of things. That's just.
When you say work out there, are you talking about Keller Road?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Out of the station.
Yeah, okay. So, every village, they're asking for a representative from each of the villages?
From Grand Rapids and Towntogy.
Okay.
And then township, a person out of the township, uh, from each township. Providence, or, I mean, Grand Rapids and Washington.
Oh, okay. So, that's four people.
Four people.
How many people are on the council altogether?
Four.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
And all four have their term is up?
No.
Oh.
Just one.
Oh, just one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we appoint John Berry as our representative to the ambulance district.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint John Berry to the ambulance, back on the ambulance board, um, for the term of three years.
Uh, Jody Downsack?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Rick Tolz?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
And thank you for serving. We appreciate that.
Yes, very much.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Um, I've got some myself. I've got a person that's gonna be on the planning commission. He's gonna take Mike Fatsinger's place. His name is Bill Hutchison. Um, he's been a mayor prior before, uh, several years ago, and also he's been on council for some time also. He said he'd be glad to, um, take over the position and, from Mike Fatsinger.
Okay.
Um, I said that I'd mention that tonight. I just need council's approval for that. I think we own that bill. Need a motion to pass that through for him and.
I'll make a motion that Bill Hutchison be appointed, um, be, is he going to take over Mike's, Mike's office as well?
No, just Mike's, just the oversee.
Okay, so the chairman of that planning commission in Lou, uh, because, uh, Mr. Fatsinger retired from it.
Correct.
So, that was my motion, bumbling as it was.
How's that?
I have a motion and a second to, um, appoint Bill to the planning commission. Bill Hutchison to the planning commission. Have a vote.
Uh, Martha Frank?
Yes.
Rick Tolz?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Jody Downsack?
Yes.
Motion passes. Unfinished business, uh, I'm just wondering if, um, we should have a finance meeting sometime about the sidewalks, to, to replenish the fund that's, um, being used for paying for those. Probably have to look at that a little closer and see how much money is left in there because we know how much farther we can go. But, um, we'll have to see about how we can maybe make a resolution to move money over from some fund and get it into that.
Before we do our permanent appropriations?
Yeah.
We need to meet them before then?
Yeah, I would think so.
I don't know if it's necessarily, you know, before. Probably just sometimes you're.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got money in there. Don't get me wrong. It's just, um, we want to.
Can we handle, do the permanent appropriations or does that need to be before that? Because we'll be meeting in February for sure for that, for the permanent appropriations, right?
We can talk about it then, I guess. Kind of look at it.
Because we're gonna need to know for sure any projects that you guys have this year, including the sidewalks.
Yeah. Okay, just keep that in your back of your mind.
Sure, yeah.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? There's no new business. We're council comments.
I'm just gonna throw out a question, and this is for us as well as the visitors. Has anyone had any strange objects in their mailboxes? No, or inappropriate?
No.
Objects? No one?
Just bills and mailboxes.
Different category.
Oh, 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 okay, sorry.
All right. I've, I've just had a few things that are highly inappropriate and, um, just some, a big surprise. But I just wondered if this is a, um, thing that's happening to other people. But it's news to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll take it up with the deputy sheriff.
I, I've got one thing. We've been getting a bunch of phone calls, say, Grand Rapids on it. They even came out and said, we, we looked it back up again, it was a person that died that they called with the person's name from Grand Rapids. It had that phone number that they kept going, all different numbers, all the way up the line. Every fifteen minutes it was ringing. I just unplugged the phone. I got tired of it. We got a landline for our computer and I also got cell phones, but it's amazing how they can do that.
Our pastor a while ago said that somebody had taken his number and was using it when he lived here in town. And so, he wanted people to know that wasn't him making all those crazy calls, you know? But, yeah, I don't. But yeah, I don't know how they do that. I, I, it's annoying, that's for sure.
Yeah, it was, yes, it is.
Yeah, so it has an eight, three, two excuse.
Yeah, it sure does.
Yeah.
I get them like that for bowling green, three, five, four, three, five, two, and some of my doctors are there, so, you know, I'm thinking that that's who's calling, that it's not.
New and creative ways to.
Yeah, I know.
Scale.
Just be vigilant and.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other council comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve our village council again, and I am uh looking forward to a productive and hopefully prosperous twenty twenty four. Absolutely, thank you.
Have to thank Crystal and Chad too for doing a good job. Taking care of things in the town and hope we don't have too much snow this year.
I'll put the plows and everything on, so hopefully that'll.
Yeah, that'll, that'll do it.
That'll it, that'll start it.
If you're prepared, it will.
I just charge my batteries for my solar or something.
All right, I'll help too.
I'll help too. Yep.
There's no more.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn on January eighth, twenty twenty four, will you?
Rick Tolz?
Yes.
Louise Eastep?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Jody Donspock?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.